Dickinson City Commission for July 21st of 2020, but the records show that all commissioners are present. Before we begin with our order of business, I would like to ask that we pause for a moment of silence for Mr. Craig Kuvus, who recently passed away this weekend. He was our city engineer. Craig will be truly missed. We'll move into the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business, Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker. There is some changes to the order on in administration finance under 3C Diamond Acres 2018 abatement application. We would be asking to amend that to be Diamond Acres 2018 and 19 abatement application. In the public works, both presentations items will be done by utilities manager stack. And then, under number 10, commission, under the American Bank Center Architect RFP, that's the consideration to approve an RFP for an architect. And then, I would like to add the Burger Electric proposal of the fiber interduct for the new city hall under that. And that would be it. Oh, excuse me. Under administration, I did forget, under the E for reports, the library annual report will be pulled.
Okay. Any questions on the amendment to our order of business? If not, I'd look for a motion on the amended order of business.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a second to approve the amended order of business. Any further discussion or questions on the amended order of business? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the amended order of business state aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish Hearing no questions on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, consent agenda is approved. Move, let's see, we have, at 5:00, we have three public hearings, so we'll move right along here with the agenda. First item up is our monthly financial report, and that'll be handled by our accountant, Mr. Maury. Evening.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Starting off with our treasures report, you can see we're still at our $70 million mark, where we've been the last couple of financial reports. So, no major changes in any of our checking accounts. Same goes for investments. As of, as of the end of June 30th, we're still right around, around $37 million with all of our investments. I know we've mentioned too, all of our pension contributions have come out at the, at the beginning of the year, so we haven't had any, any major changes to these investment accounts. Moving on to our 1% sales tax. So you can see, the red line is 2020, the blue line is 2019. So you can, you can see at the end of that red line in June, we did go down about, looks like it was about 163,000 in our 1% sales tax. So it's, it's a pretty significant decline from where we were in June of the prior year. For the total, for the first six months, we're down 63,000, which is a 2.2% decrease. So, some of those higher months earlier in 2020 did help us. As far as just specifically June 2020 versus June 2019, that's where we're down 33%. Our half percent sales tax is a reminder to the public, we show this slide just to, to show that we do record the 1% and the half percent in separate funds. So this, this chart will be exactly the same as the chart you previously saw. In our hospitality tax, again, you can see the, the red line did, did decrease in June of 2020. So in June of 2020 compared to June of 2019, we're down about $35,000. Through the first six months, the total, we're down about $47,000, so about a 10% decrease for the first six months of the year. In our occupancy tax, through, through the first six months, we're down about $25,000 total, which is about an 18% decrease. And then again, you can see in June, we received roughly half of what we received in June of 2019, the blue line. So, so a total, a total decrease of about, about $12,500 for, for June. Same goes for oil impact revenue, so for the first six months, total, we're down about 498,000, which is a 7.7% decrease. In June, we were down 590,000 from the previous year, so, so about half of where we were in June of 2019. And then moving on to our general fund, so you can see, in that first circle on the left is our general fund expenses. The, the red shade is what we've expended out of our total budget, and we're, we're right about almost exactly 50%, right where we should be in our general fund expenses. And then in our general fund revenues, we've actually collected 64% of what we projected for all of 2020. And then moving on to our enterprise funds, so you can see in the red for the expenses, we're about 44% of our total budget at this point in the year. And then revenues, we're, we're right around 48% in our total revenue collected in the enterprise funds. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions the commission might have, and city staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Maury? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the monthly, monthly financial report.
President Decker, I will motion to approve the June 2020 financial report.
We have a motion to approve the June financial report by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any questions, further questions, comments for staff on the financial report? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a citizen interest form, and that'll be presented by HR Coordinator Nomenek.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. We received one citizen interest form for the Civil Service Commission from Dr. Robert Baer. The city has one opening on the Civil Service Board, and the term would end on 12/31/2020. Dr. Robert Baer comes with, with great qualifications and experience. He is the owner of Dickinson Family Counseling Center, and has been proudly servicing individuals in Dickinson and the surrounding community for 14 years. He has background in interviewing, hiring, discipline and firing employees. And he writes that it is his goal to work with other members on the Civil Service Commission to ensure that the employees of the city of Dickinson are treated with the utmost respect, foster healthy work environment, and are able to have a sense of pride for working for the city of Dickinson. The city staff feels that he will be a great asset to the Civil Service Commission, and the city, interim city administrator Carlson and city staff recommend approval of Dr. Baer to complete the term left by Commissioner Sobeluk, which would end on 12/31/2021.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on this citizen interest form? If not, I'd look for a motion to appoint, I think it's Dr. Baer, Dr. Baer to the Civil Service Commission.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Ms. Walla. Any further questions, comments on the citizen interest form in these, in this appointment? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up will be presented by our city assessor, Mr. Hirschfeld. It is an abatement on a 2018 and 2019 abatement for Diamond Acres.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners.
Good evening. I think it's on.
Okay. This doesn't happen very often, but I have an abatement here that staff's in, in favor of, or supporting anyway. It would be 113 parcels vacant, was previously platted land, so had been platted in 2018 and 19, has since been de-platted. It lies south of Players and west of the Fisher Park area, so probably that hayfield that you're aware of as you drive on 21st Avenue East. Mr. Kitson had received a plat to develop that, but at some point after that, he was told he would not be able to get permits to build that by a prior staff. And so he, he didn't build that out, and he's been paying taxes on that, and he's been in my office several times about having that abated, explaining to him that there's the seven criteria that I must follow as an assessor, and one of those is plating of the land. And I suggested to him, if you were to de-plat that, since, you know, he really had no intention of building that current plat, then we could go back and look at this. So 2020 is when he had that de-platted, and I told him I would support his abatement and going back as far as we could, which is to the 2018 tax year, and abating those 113 parcels out. Working with Stark County staff, the tax director Natalie Wandler, she developed the spreadsheet that we have here and a method that she's going to use to remove that value if this is successful moving through. And it very simplifies taking one of the larger parcels, attributing the value to that one parcel, and then giving a negative or a zero value then to the rest of these to ease their job. But in essence, what we're doing is we're adding value at $750 an acre, the ag land valuation that we've used throughout Dickinson for ag land parcels, and putting that value on and then removing the prior platted land value. 2019 had a slightly lower value overall, that was, we added some additional vacancy rate to that property, but other than that, we're looking for the same $750 an acre value. For both of those, the total would be $45,000 for 2018 and for 2019. Staff supports this abatement, and with that, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? So if there are any future plans on this property, they would have to go through the whole process of taking it out of ag back into residential.
That is correct.
Any other questions, comments? I have a question for Mrs. Wenko. Can we do these jointly, or we need to do individual abatements?
I will pose a question to Mr. Hirschfeld. Were the applications together for separate years, or they, were they separate? For the 2018 and 2019?
They, they are separate applications for each year.
Then I would recommend separate motion.
Okay. All right. If there are no further questions for Mr. Hirschfeld, I would look for a motion on the 2018 abatement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the 2018 abatement by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any other questions for staff on this abatement? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now the 2019, are there any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the 2019 abatement? There are no questions or comments, then I would look for a motion on the 2019 abatement.
Move to your first.
We have a motion to approve the 2019 abatement by Commissioner Walla.
And I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
One other question with this property, and it may be a question I need to pose to Ms. Wenko, is, is there support from, from the commission to have us administratively correct the 2020 value and have that done prior to the final value being set by the state board and then moving over to the auditor? Or do we have to wait and do a, the 2020 abatement after taxes come out in December?
Mr. President, commissioners, I, I think it's probably fine to do it administratively. I, I think the intent is that it's been unplatted, and it would just create extra work, having to redo the application when the intent is now that it is unplatted property.
Has that, that been submitted to? That was submitted, I guess, because we just submitted 2021, right, to the county?
That 20, 2020's value.
Okay, so that is what was submitted.
Correct.
If you can do it administratively, I would say do it now.
I would agree.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hirschfeld. Okay, the next item up, we have a proclamation. It was one of my favorite days last year, and I see there's some members from the, the chamber here, if they want to come up and speak to Lemonade Day a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor Decker. So Lemonade Day is an entrepreneurial learning experience for elementary age youth in this community. This is the second year that the Dickinson Area Chamber of Commerce is having Lemonade Day. We're excited to announce that we have over 27 participants registered. 27 is the last number I know, but I think a few more have come in. And that means that we have over 20 stands that we plotted, and small businesses run on August 1st. Participants will have an opportunity to win contests for best stand design, best tasting lemonade, best business model, and will have a chance to even earn a scholarship to DSU for when they get to that at age. Today, the Lemonade Council asks that Mayor Decker and the city commission proclaim August 1st as Lemonade Day in Dickinson and support this community's youngest and sweetest business-minded professionals.
All right, well, thank you. Are you still, are you still looking for, I'm unable to judge this year. I judged last year. Are you still looking for judges, or do you have judges?
We have enough judges.
Did you? You did get?
We have enough judges.
I wasn't, I wasn't able to participate this year, but I had a blast last year. It was...
You have that you can go ahead.
Well, hopefully next year will work out. I was planning, we had this planned for what, the end of June originally, right?
It was earlier in June. We postponed due to COVID this year.
I am, I am a little disappointed, I'm not able to judge. I'm sure that the rules are a little bit different this year going in judging, but it wa, it was a really good time. So if you ever have the opportunity, commissioners, possibly next year, be part of that judging panel, you get to meet some very excited young men and women that are future entrepreneurs for the city of Dickinson. So without further weight, I will go ahead with this proclamation. The City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation, President Scott Decker proclaims August 1st, 2020 Lemonade Day in Dickinson. Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide program that introduces youth to entrepreneurship by teaching them how to start, own, and operate their own lemonade stand. After youth have completed the Lemonade Day curriculum, they are prepared for the real-world experience of owning their own lemonade business. Youth are encouraged to spend some, save some, and share some of their profit by giving back to the community that has supported them. More than nine sponsors have teamed up to bring Lemonade Day to Dickinson, including Dickinson Area Chamber of Commerce, The Optimist Club, Saks Motors, West Dakota Chevy Dealers, Hampton Inn and Suites, Titan Energy Services, American Bank Center, Bush Lumber, Dakota Sign Works, and the city of Dickinson. On Lemonade Day, everyone has an important role to play in supporting our youth. Whether you're mentoring a youth, hosting a stand, or purchasing lemonade, the entire community can be involved in supporting our young entrepreneurs. To find out more information or to register for Lemonade Day Dickinson, visit lemonade Dickinson, or Lemonade Day Dickinson will be August 1st, 2020. Our goal is to register 40 youth, who in turn will start new businesses across Dickinson on a single day. Learn more at lemonade day.org/dickinson, or join us on the social media of www.facebook.com/lemonade day dickinson. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal to be affixed. I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. All in favor of this proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Lemonade Day is officially August 1st.
Would it be possible for us to get a photo with you?
It would be.
To share? That'd be great.
Yeah, come around the back here, we'll kind of... All right, now, three, two, one, fifty more. I can make your photos, we're gonna do a lot. All right. We'll pass this down to Mrs. Carlson, and she'll sign off on it, and it can be yours. Thank you for all the hard work on this team. You guys do an awesome job, and I know the kids, they're, they're excited, so. Okay, we have a few more minutes, and next item up is our Siren 2020 radio equipment purchase, and that'll be presented by our acting assistant city administrator slash police chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. At the July 16th, the budget meeting did a presentation on the Siren 2020 project, which is actually an acronym for the State Interoperable Radio Network Program. Initially, this got a kickoff in the state of North Dakota back in 2011. It has gone through several legislative sessions, and as a city, we expected at some point in time there'd be a, a sizable cost to the city to purchase radio equipment for public safety. At this time, we do have $5,000 set aside in the 2020 budget, and also $5,000 allocated in the 2021 budget if needed. If we were to make the purchase this year for the radio equipment, we'd be looking at just under $664,000 prior to the rebates. After the rebates, we'd be looking at about $459,000 in purchase costs. At this time, I'm requesting the ability to make the purchase in August, so we'd get those rebate dollars back.
Okay, any questions for Chief Dossinger? I guess I would just, for the general public, chief, if you could give them just a little kind of history, I know you said this, this started in 2011, but just kind of a history why this is being mandated by the state?
Certainly, and basically, what Siren is, it's a statewide solution for delivering interoperable radio system for public safety, public safety community. It really came to light when we were dealing with DAPL, and we'd have several agencies from various communities and law enforcement organizations responding to one point in time, and communication really became critical, and was obviously a problem because various agencies could not communicate with one another. This was brought to light through the legislative sessions, and there was dollars ear, ear tagged through several legislative sessions, first of all, to do a feasibility study, and then to, to allocate funds that would come back to municipalities, which basically comes in the form of a rebate for us.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Dossinger on the Siren? Mrs. Carlson, we have found the appropriate funding mechanism to bump this up to this year.
Correct, President Decker. As Chief Dossinger stated, we have set aside $500,000 in this year and next year's budget, and if we could just allocate the $664,000 this year, then we wouldn't be, we would, plus our rebates, we wouldn't have to have allocation for next year.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion from the commissioners on the Siren 2020 radio equipment purchase.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick. Second by Commissioner Altman. Uh, excuse me.
Altman.
Oderman. I don't know where that came from. Commissioner Oderman, for those watching online. Any further questions for Chief Dossinger on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up, we have a report from Eldercare. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Colleen Bretikowski, and I'm the executive director of Eldercare and Dickinson Public Transit in Dickinson. And with me here today is my, our management team. I have Erin Humphrey, she's the assistant executive director, as well as our manager Gina Bauer. So first of all, I want to greet everybody, wish you a, a good afternoon, and also welcome our two new commissioners, Commissioner Sobeluk and Commissioner Oderman. I'm welcome to the, being on the commissioners here, and we appreciate all that you guys all do for our city and city employees, because we have such a wonderful community, so very Something I just wanted to start off with, before I do the slide, is just a little bit of a background for the new commissioners. Eldercare and Dickinson Public Transit are housed in the public transit building, which is a little bit north of Walmart, and that building is owned by the city. So it was built with stimulus money through President Obama, and it was a joint, joint effort with the DOT, Eldercare, public tran, Dickinson Public Transit, as well as the city. City owns the building, we're housed there rent-free as an in-kind gift from the city, so grateful of our home. Our vehicles have a wonderful garage to house the public transit vehicles, so it's easier to do vehicle checkups, checks in the morning and at the end of the shifts, and we just, we love our building. We take excellent care of it, so we, we treat it like it's our own, and so we're happy for that partnership. And also, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more later on about the partnership we have with the city. Eldercare and Dickinson Public Transit could not be here today without the city's financial support, as well as your overall support of our community for the seniors and elderly who need a nutritional meal, and all those, and all the people who need to use public transit to get to work and to get out and about, so. All right? So really, when we look at it, we're essential, public transit is essential to the community, and this report today is part of our contract and our agreement with the city. We give a report every year on public transit, and of course, I throw in Eldercare at the end as well, because we, we get some funding from the city for Eldercare too. So anyways, it's crucial, elderly, disabled, socio-economically challenged, we're using transit, people are using it for convenience, cost and environmental concerns, and it contributes to our economic vitality in our town. Our mission, our mission at Dick, for Dickinson, public transit works to meet the changing transit needs of Dickinson and the surrounding area. We provide ser- We provide services to the general public, and we lend ourselves to improving people's quality of life and the freedom of mobility for the residents, and it allows them the opportunity for employment and self-sufficiency, which may otherwise be impossible. We're the only transit in the city that provides, accepts payments for North Dakota Medicaid and Sanford Health Plan, and we are also the only providing the town for wheelchair-accessible vehicles to transport people. And of course, we reduce congestion and parking demands, and we keep the members of our community independent, as well as their quality of life. The importance, these are our big, these are our big trips, work, medical, shopping, social, and more. So any place somebody needs to go, we take them. We also go once a week to Bismarck for mostly medical trips, but we can take somebody for shopping or for the airport in Bismarck, but majority of the rides once a week when we go to Bismarck are medical. We will take trips to Bismarck as well on off days as well, of course, depending if we have a driver available and a vehicle to take that person. So this is a pie chart of our income, and the next slide will give a little bit more information, but our top two categories are agency income and local match. Agency income is going to be that, the DOT funding that we receive to help us to provide our transit services, and then local match is going to be our meal levy, the city, the funds that we get from the city, any contract dollars. Fair income is about 11%, and we won't talk about interest income, because it's so tiny. But here's our 2019 report, total income was a little over a million for Dickinson Public Transit. And you see under local match, we have the city sales tax there, as well as the city's taxi, the subsidy that we receive. This year, I already spoke a little bit with Linda Carlson, and we're just asking to maintain the dollars you have been so generous with us for the next two years. Our expenses was a little over a million as well, with a net income about $67,000. And I know you guys received this packet in advance, so if there's any questions, just go ahead and ask me while I'm presenting. One-way trips, these are those trips that we talked about in that first pie chart, where the trips are at. Last two years, public buildings has bypassed social events, so I thought that was cool. Last year, I reported to you, it was the first time public buildings bypassed social events, and we, and that was maintained again this year. The four top categories, work, back a long time ago, before the oil boom hit, and medical was always our number one. Work has been number one since the oil boom, and it continues today. We're taking more people to work than we're taking for medical, and then shopping, and then we see the public buildings again. And I gave you the last three years. And then this is just a breakout of the elderly, general public wheelchair, and kidney dialysis in Bismarck. We don't take, we, we, there might be a little bit more in the elderly category, we don't ask for the categories, but we know where those are at. And then here's trips and passengers. When you look at passengers, we go up at passengers, 45,000 last year. You guys, we hit every single day of the year last year, a high since about, since 2012. We had a fabulous year last year. I mean, it was just constantly emails going out, we hit the highest Sunday, we hit the highest Friday. We had a phenomenal year last year with the 45,000 passengers. We went up about 17.9% last year, just in our trip, passenger trips. I love this chart, because it's kind of from when I started, and it tells a little bit about the curve that we went up to about 2011 was our highest at 55, and just look at that down to the 45. So, you know, we really, we've done outstanding with building, building that up. I really attribute that to, Gina has come on board and has done a phenomenal job in transit with the scheduling of the drivers. Couple years ago, we had the Nelson Nygaard Evaluation of our Community and Transit, and we pulled back our hours of operation through the extra drivers into the day shift, and utilizing those shifts and when we need the drivers to work, I think, has been, has been a wonderful addition to our working efficiently to get people where they need to go. And then this is just a nice chart, again, tells a little bit about the history of Dickinson, where we've been, back to when we took over taxi, the taxi services, back in 2009 to when the oil picked up, taxis started appearing in our community. You guys put in together some laws and regulations to monitor the taxis, the end of the oil boom, as well as when we changed our fares in 2018, we, that as well, we lowered our fares to $4 across the board, pre-scheduled or on-demand, and that also affected our ridership in addition to the scheduling. Challenges, always, hiring and retaining staff, I mean, that's always a challenge. Our vehicles are phenomenally getting older and older. I think there's only three on our fleet that have not met their useful life, and we are looking to, we ordered a van already this year, we got a bus we just ordered, and we're hoping for two more, two more buses, because the vehicles definitely need to be replaced, as well as expanded. And always watching traffic congestion and roads conditions in our town, because that affects us. And here's the, here's the fleet that we have at Dickinson Public Transit, and the three yellow are the ones, the vehicles that have not met useful life. The rest of them all have met their useful life. Lot of successes, I already talked about the first one, those break, in number one and two, breaking those records. Safety is so critical, it's our number one mission at Elder Care and Public Transit is safety. Our second mission is exceeding customer service expectations, going above and beyond with our customers. High level of training, we train the staff regularly. Right now, we're not holding those regular meetings, but we are doing memos and one-on-one trainings with our staff. CPR, first aid, AED certified with our transit staff. Last year, we changed our name. We used to be called just Public Transit, and to tie Dickinson to our services, we changed to Dickinson Public Transit. You'll see all the decals on our vehicles that we've made that change as well. Last year, we held the Dakota Transit Association Conference, Fall Conference for North Dakota and South Dakota, here in Dickinson, we hosted it. Larry Robinson, who's a CPA in town, received the North Dakota Friend of Transit Award, and then Kelsey Canol, she's our Finance and Human Resource Coordinator in our office, she received the 2019 Outstanding Support Staff of the Year. So really, two great awards that Dickinson Public Transit was recognized for last year. Our goals, always commitment to safety, maintaining our salaries and benefits, gaining business sponsorships on our vehicles to help us with more local match. Implementing shopping shuttles has been put on hold because of the COVID pandemic. Purchasing vehicles, researching a store value card for fares, always increasing ridership, and then Route Match, recently, just the other day, Route Match software, where we get our software from, was bought out by Uber Technologies, Inc. I'm so excited. And we've had some challenges with our software, and I really, really like Uber's technology with the cellphone and how you can get a ride in cities and see where that driver is at. I am, I am so hopeful that after this acquisition, that we can get something like that with the Route Match software for our town, because I think that would be a phenomenal addition to our, to our services. Critical future needs, we always need, always working to maintain and increase funding so that we can stay, continue to provide the services we do, and our partnerships and relationship, so grateful, like I said, at the opening, for our partnership with the city of Dickinson and the community. NDOT is a, we are funded through them and follow all the regulation, follow regulations. The Senior County Meal Levy we receive, as well as United Way donations. Always retaining and growing our staff and adapting to new markets. Thought I'd put a slide in here, even though we're talking about 2019, COVID has really affected all of us, and I thought I would share just a little bit about what that, what that has done to public transit. We have not changed our hours of operation, we kept everything the same. We did not want to close the doors, do anything different, so the community knows what to expect from us, and they can trust us, and we keep, of course, masks, hand sanitizer, Lysol, disinfecting, we do all that regularly. We were doing that every day anyways in the office, but now you do it more often in the office, and of course, the, excuse me, the vehicles. We modified our vehicles, and we put in some plexiglass to protect the driver, we limit the number of riders on our vehicles, we try to go one at a time, sometimes there might be two. Drivers wear the masks, masks, and we offer masks to driver, to riders as well. Our passenger count decreased drastically, just like most people did, mid-March through April. Ridership has been increasing ever since April, and I, we threw in a chart here just to show you. We're running about 4,400 trips a month, month, back in January, and you see March was slowly coming down halfway through, and then April drastically, and then you can see May and June are coming up again. Today, I just checked on the way here, we had about 120 rides, and we were running about, I'd say maybe around 200 mark before, 180, about 180 before COVID hit, and now, today was 120, when I checked in. So we've received some additional funding from NDOT, as well as aging services to help us provide our services, buy the supplies we need to continue our operations. And here's my couple slides on Elder Care. Elder Care runs the nutrition program. For our new Commissioners, we have about 24 meal sites in southwest North Dakota. Dickinson Transit is Dickinson, but we will go out of town as needed with our one trip to Bismarck a week, but the meal program is in southwest North Dakota. The meal program either is at a senior center, it could be at a, at a building, and we also started about, maybe five years ago, we created the Elder Care Cafe 60 program, where we use restaurants, we partner with restaurants, which has been a really, really good, a good addition to our staff, or to our food program, and statewide, we shared it with everybody, and people are starting to do more and more of the cafe partnerships to feed the seniors. But we had, we did run at a negative last year, about 46,000 for Elder Care. Hiring and retaining staff continues, increase of food costs, you know the shortage we're receiving right now, I mean, beef, chicken, costs are high, products are off the trucks, sometimes we can't get what we're used to, so we have to make it work with what's available right now through the pandemic. Regulations make us difficult to keep meal sites open, so I'm hoping to start another new program this year called Bistro 60, and I'll report on that next year, once we get that up and running. That's going to be a separate meal program, I'm not operating through the state, where I don't have to have the heavy regulations of the nutritional components of a meal that are so costly for seniors. Right now, with the pandemic, the regulations for the nutritional components of the meals have been relinquished. The state is asking us to serve about a 533-calorie meal, which is one-third of the calories for a senior. So still do a good meal, but I don't have to serve the carrots instead of the green beans, because the carrots have the nutritional value. So we're not as regulated right now, so that we can get those meals out. I'm here again, 24 meal sites, Cafe 60, we talked about, but we partnered with Sedexo at Dickinson State last year, because we had to close our kitchen, we lost our cook, and she had unexpectedly passed away, and I, we just couldn't find someone to put that, to fill that role. So we did partner with Sedexo at Dickinson State, they're doing all of our meals in Dickinson, as well as our home-delivered, and our meal sites in town, and we added two Cafe 60 restaurants in Dickinson, one is at Roosevelt Grand Dakota, and then The Perch at DSU, those are closed right now with COVID. We provided 60,000 meals last year, and the brunt of them, of those congregate, that 30,000, 40% of them are restaurants. Seniors enjoy the restaurant meals, where they can choose more than just eat what we give, we put, we give them. Home-delivered meals run almost 28,000. Our goal is always securing funding with our budget, keeping the meal sites open, hiring staff, improving those menus for Cafe 60, as well as introducing that new meal program, Bistro 60, 60 this year. COVID has really affected us. We switched going, serving hot meals in Dickinson every day to every Friday, to help our social distancing. So every Friday, seniors received only one hot meal and six frozen. We just recently started going back to every Monday through Friday, hot meals, the seniors really miss those hot meals, but we have to watch that, depends what happens in our community, we just never know, we might have to go back to the one hot. We are, we can modify our meals right now with the pandemic, we can give carryout, takeout, there's different ways, our regulations have been relaxed to get through the pandemic to feed as many seniors as we can, and again, of course, we continue to do all the safety precautions delivering the meals. Something new, I don't know if it's on here next, but something we just did as well is we partnered with, we're partnering with Country Kitchen. On Tuesdays, we're delivering three meals to seniors as well, so we've brunted, we are giving more meals out than once a day, because we can right now. So we're giving three meals on Tuesdays to the home, home, home-delivered meals, so the homebound seniors. I'm from Country Kitchen, they're enjoying that as well. And we check in with our meal participants, see how they're doing. A lot of the seniors are just home, they need, they need that companionship and that check, and our staff knows a lot of them very well from serving, serving meals to them. And, yeah, and here's our meals right here, too. This is some tremendous meal counts, have gone up since the pandemic. January, we were about 2,000 meals a month, we're up to 47. Look at June, 6,500. So we're, we're serving, serving more and more seniors through the pandemic. Oh, I'm done. So that's, that's the brunt of my presentation, but I'll entertain any questions that you have for either Elder Care or Dickinson Public Transit.
Any questions for Ms. Rodekowski?
Ms. Rodekowski?
Yes.
So do you kind of contribute that uptick in meals in May and June to the pandemic? Did you have a lot of people reaching out to you, looking for?
Yeah, the meal, the meal count went up because the relax on those meals went down, because we can do takeout and carryout, right, before we had to serve it at a meal site, because part of the Older American Act, which, which does the regulations for Elder Care, part of that Older American Act is not just the nutritional meal, but social. So you have to eat like here, we have to eat in this room, together, to socialize. But with the pandemic and the need to have social distancing, the meal count went up that way, plus the funding that the state has given us to try to get seniors more food, more meals, you know, more than just that one meal a day. We're, we're giving more meals out as well. That also brought in more meals, seniors coming and asking for the meals because they were homebound. So it's a little bit of all of that together.
Is there any chance that that lighting, lightening of the restrictions, so we can get those, that increased number of meals out to seniors continues in the future, after we're through the?
I, that would like make my job perfect, if that happened, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that will happen, I've shared that with the colleagues in the state, but the Older American Act has to be changed by Congress, which we were successful a couple years ago, changing some of those regs through Senator Haidkamp, because I was working with her staff, telling them, we've got to get these rules lowered. I'm, I'm hopeful, Commissioner Otterman, that, that those will go down, because my goal is to feed the senior a meal they're going to eat and love and enjoy, not the meal that, that we're regulated to give them, because they can't eat some of that, or they don't like it. So that's why the restaurants have been so popular, is because they go in, and we have a menu of approved meals, and they can pick what they want to eat. Whereas in Dickinson, like right now, through Sedexo, there's the same meal that everybody's getting today. You know, it might be chicken with rice and a vegetable, fruit and milk.
Well, it's always exciting to talk to you about this, because you can see your passion and your creativity with the Bistro 60. I know, we had, we had dealt with some things trying to maybe be the site for, and I'm glad you guys found Sedexo, we had talked about maybe the hospital being the source, but, but yeah, throughout this whole thing, I, I think your passion and your creativity comes through, so I just want to give you a lot of credit and your staff, and I see your staff with public transit, dropping people off at the hospital all the time. Chief Dossinger's son's one of your drivers, and they just do a great job of treating your customers in a really respectful, positive way, so, yeah, I just, I can't say enough about the good things you guys are doing.
Well, I, I love my job, and I love the changes that we can make in people who are riding, as well the seniors, and honestly, that goes straight to the management team and all the staff. We have a phenomenal staff. They're, they're there for the right reasons, and we work to take care of them and train them, and make a difference, so, yeah. Maybe Bistro 60, if you can get a contract signed. If you can get a contract, do your tourney. That's where we were struggling, we could do Bistro 60.
I'm excited about that, yeah.
Yep, through the restaurant, I would love that. A lot of seniors are volunteering and run through our hospital, and they got phenomenal food there, so, yeah, thank you. Thanks for all that you do.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you for your report.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we have a public hearing, our Chapter 29 Ordinance Amendment for Drug and Alcohol, and HR Coordinator Nomenek will be handling the next. and alcohol, and HR coordinator Nomenek will be handling the next three public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. The first, um, the first one is the drug and alcohol policy, um, ordinance number sixteen ninety-six, um, and that was just some changes that were made, um, to this policy to bring it up to date with the new FMCSA regulations, um, and some, some other minor changes that had to be made, and um, we're looking for consideration to approve second reading and final passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on sixteen ninety-six? This is the second reading and the public hearing. If there are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments on Chapter Twenty-nine ordinance amendment to our drug and alcohol policy, which will be our ordinance sixteen ninety-six, please come forward and state your name. If you wish to call in, the number is seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Okay, anyone have any comments on ordinance sixteen ninety-six? This is an amendment to Chapter Twenty-nine, our drug and alcohol policy for the city. Hearing none on sixteen ninety-six, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments, questions for staff on sixteen ninety-six? There are no comments or questions, I'd look for a motion on sixteen ninety-six.
Mr. Prozal, motion approved, ordinance number sixteen ninety-six.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walla to approve sixteen ninety-six.
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further comments, questions on sixteen ninety-six? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Nomenek, we'll go to sixteen ninety-seven, which is the on-call pay for employees.
Thank you. This, uh, policy is related to the on-call pay for employees, um, for those who are on-call at home and are able to resolve the issue remotely, um, and, um, this is to pay them overtime for those hours and that time spent at home working on those issues. Um, we are looking for consideration to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance sixteen ninety-seven.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on sixteen ninety-seven? The only thing that I would request, and I, I don't know if this needs to be amendment to this, is that we can get a report on the amount of these calls added, and it can be added to the consent agenda, just so that we see what the totals are, or how many people are actually using this, and what the amount is. And if it could be detailed by department and what, for what purpose? Does that have to be an amendment?
Mr. President, I, I don't think that's necessary, I think that's more of an internal policy with regard to the ordinance.
I think that would be helpful to the commission, to see how this is being utilized. Commissioners, if you don't have any more comments or questions, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishes to come forward, if any has any questions, concerns, uh, that the commission needs to hear about sixteen ninety-seven, please come forward, state your name for the commission. Again, those watching online, you can call seven oh one four five six seven zero zero Anyone from the public have any concerns on sixteen ninety-seven? Any concerns? Seeing no one has any concerns on sixteen ninety-seven, commissioners, do you have any further questions or comments for staff? I'll close the public hearing. Hearing no questions or comments on sixteen ninety-seven, I'd look for a motion on sixteen ninety-seven.
Mr. President, so moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments, debate? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Nomenek, you have an amendment to our human resources grievance procedure, this would be ordinance number sixteen ninety-eight.
Thank you. This, uh, policy is, um, in relation to the grievance, human resources grievance procedures, um, since the city administrator is the final decision-maker on grievances, there currently is no protocol in our grievances, um, if it were to be against the city administrator. This policy will just clarify that issue for us. Um, so, we are asking for consideration to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance sixteen ninety-eight.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on sixteen ninety-eight? Hearing no questions and comments on sixteen ninety-eight, I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that has any comments, questions on sixteen ninety-eight, for city staff or for commissioners, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns or your just general comments. Again, if the, you're watching online, you can call seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six and comment on ordinance sixteen ninety-eight. Is there anyone from the public with any concerns? Anyone from the public have any concerns or comments on sixteen ninety-eight? Seeing that there are no concerns or comments, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or comments for Mrs. Nomenek on sixteen ninety-eight or any other city staff?
Just have one question. Ms. Nomen, what was, in our previous HR policy, what was the process?
There really wasn't anything designated for if it was a city administrator, so...
Even in the previous one?
No, no, so that's, that's why we...
So, then what, would civil service come in then, if they didn't agree with the?
Uh, probably, at that point, it probably would've gone to civil service first and then city commission. I don't think we ever had that happen, so we didn't, we weren't faced with it, so...
Sure, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on sixteen ninety-eight.
I'll make the motion to approve sixteen ninety-eight.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve sixteen ninety-eight.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions or comments for city staff on sixteen ninety-eight? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. This is the, also the portion where if you're watching online or if you are in the, seated in the audience, where we open up the public comments, not on our agenda, if there are any items not on our agenda that you wish to call in, um, express any concerns or have questions for the city commission, now is the time. That number again is seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six. You may call in with any questions or comments for the city commission. If you're in the audience, you may come forward, state your name, and uh, let us know your concerns, or have any public comments not on the agenda. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any comments or concerns that are not on our agenda, we'll close that segment of the city commission meeting. We'll go back to our normal agenda, and we had the library removed, so the annual report is off. We have nothing this evening from public safety. We'll move right into engineering, and Assistant City Engineer Marshick, you have a Highlands Engineering Task Order for us.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. The item before you is a task order for general construction administration services to provide on-call construction inspection and administration services for various city of Dickinson public infrastructure projects. This agreement's an hourly agreement, which will generally be invoiced back to the developer on a per, uh, excuse me, back to the developer per our city of Dickinson multi-party construction and funding agreement. And that agreement is a new agreement that we are working forward with in regards to our updated Chapter Thirty-four in our municipal code. The engineering staff is recommending approval of the task order with Highlands Engineering. Do you have any questions that I can help you with this evening?
Hey, do you have any, uh, commissioners, do you have any questions? This is task order two zero zero one two two dash zero one.
Correct.
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this task order? And this is for professional services with Highlands Engineering and Surveying. Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions or comments on this task order? Hearing no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Marshick, you have a multi-party construction and funding agreement with Venture and Cordova.
That's correct. President Decker, Commissioners, what was enclosed in your packet is a new multi-party agreement for the market edition. This is an agreement between the city of Dickinson, Venture Commercial LLC, and Cordova Construction Incorporated. This agreement requires the developer to provide financial security in the amount of one-hundred-eighty-four thousand, two-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and forty cents to the city of Dickinson. This is the a hundred and thirty percent of the project construction cost per city of Dickinson municipal code. The city engineering staff is recommending approval contingent on the receipt of the city-approved financial security for this multi-party agreement with Venture Commercial and Cordova Construction. Do you have questions for me on this item?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this agreement?
We have not received that yet?
We have not. Part of that, Commissioner Frederick, is that it's a new process, so this is the very first agreement we were working through, and they were on a timeline and construction has started, so we would like to get this agreement in place as soon as possible, and we're currently working with them for this financial security.
Well, that's my question, the project has started.
Commissioner Frederick, to follow up on Ms. Marshick's comments, I have been contacted by the financial institution that's working with the developer in this situation. Uh, they do have, um, the funds available to cover the cost of the financial security. Uh, we are working through the form in which that financial security will come to the city in the form of a letter of credit or a, uh, other financial security. So, uh, those representations have been made to me by the financial institutions, so it is a matter of finalizing the, uh, fine print at this point.
Okay.
We just felt with that discussion and the, um, agreements that had already been made with opening up State Avenue and having the public safety center there, um, we just wanted to keep things moving forward because they seem to have a good faith effort in getting this agreement worked through.
So, we're working, there's another multi-party issue going on, I think with the same developer. Are we working through that also?
Uh, we have one coming up with Roar's Development.
Okay. Is that the same development? Okay. Any other questions from Mrs. Marshick on this multi-party construction and funding Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on this agreement.
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further comments, questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Works Utility Manager Stack, you're gonna be presenting for the SRF resolution.
Thank, uh, thank you, President, excuse me, thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. First on our, first on our list is, uh, SRF resolution for the reuse pipeline that we had just, I believe, last, um, uh, Commission Mania had approved. It's a standard resolution formed by the, uh, North Dakota State of Environmental, uh, North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, uh, where we are, we will have Gary Zeroff, um, be a, uh, a signatory where he can go ahead and furnish information and sign all necessary documents for the state revolving, uh, loan fund for the reuse pipeline project. And, uh, staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Any questions for Mr. Stack on this resolution? This should be resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty? Any questions for Mr. Stack? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on this SRF resolution.
Want to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments on resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Stack, you have a meter interface units and fixed base upgrade agreement.
Uh, thank you, President Decker, uh, yes, that is correct. This is the, this is the, uh, I guess, project that we were talking about, we've been talking about this for about the last year and a half, basically to replace, um, many of the interface units that are failing just because they are approaching anywhere from fifteen to twenty years old. Uh, also in this project... Also in this project, we will be taking the new interface units and integrating that into a kind of an internet system where we can go ahead and read these remotely. This will also, this will save the city some manpower with, or I shouldn't say manpower, but manpower hours on the, on the monthly cycle with respect to reading meters. It'll be done almost instantaneously with basically a click of, click of a mouse button as opposed to, and I was kind of running it through my head a little bit, but we, we spend about, about 12 to 14 man-hours per cycle, per month. I'm sorry, man-hour cycle days, takes us that many. We had two people working basically four to six days per month, reading meters and rereading meters that don't, that don't read properly. So with that being said, this is going to save with, this will save manpower, number one, where they can be reallocated to other projects that we have in the Water Utility Division. And, and also it'll, it does a need that we're going to, or has a need that we need to go and replace the existing units that we have out there where our batteries are actually failing.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Stack on this agreement? Mr. Stack, this, these new meters, they still require the box, a new box, to be placed on the outside of the house?
That is correct, yes.
Have we figured out yet if we're going to have, who's going to be handling the calls on these?
The calls, oh, on the, we'll, we'll, we'll talk with, or we'll have Ferguson, who is, who would be the installer, to go ahead and relay any, any issues that might, that might be out there with respect to the boxes on the outside. And they have told us in the past that if there's a property owner that does not, just absolutely does not want to have that, they will not, they will not put one on the outside of their house.
So they will coordinate with the homeowner?
Correct.
Let the homeowner know where this box will be?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion. This is an agreement, so it does not have a number, so I'd look for a motion on this agreement with Ferguson.
I'll move to approve the emotion, or the agreement with Ferguson.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Questions for Mr. Stack? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stack.
Thank you.
We have a item in planning this evening, going to be presented by Planning Director Hadley. This is a Western Wellness Foundation agreement with them for grant writing services.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, and thank you, Commissioners. This was brought up during the budget process when we were talking about leveraging the monies that you're dedicating to specifically in this, in how it relates to me as a downtown project and a lot of the projects that I'm involved with. Obviously, we've crafted this contract, legal has looked at it, it is acceptable to Western Wellness Foundation as well. Staff would recommend approval of that. We have identified three sources that we could utilize this year for some of the monies and some of the things that we're doing now. So we're, we have already kind of identified the three, three projects that we can apply to funding for and move forward. So with that, if you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hadley?
Who's written our grants in the past, or have we not utilized grants in the past?
I think we've utilized grants in different departments. I think Dustin has, I think Public Works probably has. I've asked in the past, and the answer was no.
And have there been multiple grants that we've missed out on because of ineffective grant writing at this point in time, or just that we haven't had the manpower to do it?
Well, without some help, honestly, as a, as a 1.5-man department dealing with the public, I've done a lot of grants in the past. I can help, and I can help subs, you know, add some additional information and help grants become a better product as they go out, but as far as administering all of them, it's probably not in the cards in my department. But I think I've suggested, and I think I suggested in the budget meeting, that we actually dedicate a grant fund for all departments to access. The fund I'm using is actually the dedicated sales tax fund that's been earmarked for the downtown area. So it's, all I'm doing is leveraging funding that is, funding that's already been dedicated to go to that area. Other departments would be a different, there's a different scenario for public safety. There, there's a lot of grants, but I, they are time-consuming. I'm sure Mr. Dossinger can say that, how much time his staff spends on going through the grants for resource officers or whatnot. But this is physical improvements, literally just going to be stuff that you actually see. So it's going to actually benefit the, the amount of streetscape improvements that I can actually put out on the street for you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hadley? Look for a motion on the contract for writing grant services.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions for staff on this contract? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Yes, aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes care of our regular agenda. We'll move in the commission agenda. Our first item up on the commission agenda would be Odyssey Theaters received a small parcel from the post office, and that parcel, we have the possibility of, to purchase that small parcel. Mrs. Carlson, could you, any more information on that, or Mrs. Winko?
I can start. What, what it is, is a nine by 30.84 feet of piece of parcel. You have that little map in, in your packet. And what I did was, I did ask what the assessed value of that would be, and the assessed value on that property is $1,210. So that's what it is. And he's asking an offer from, Odyssey is asking an offer from the city. He has not provided an offer to us.
And that's the, the yellow?
Correct. Block four, block one.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or Ms. Winko on this? If no questions, I'd look for, if Commissioners feel that'd be appropriate amount to offer them for that parcel? Any comments or questions?
It doesn't, it doesn't really affect us any. Why do we need it?
Do you want?
I mean, it's, it's in the alley that, I mean, I don't know. I don't think any offer's worth, it's not worth anything to me, so.
Fine, and we can come back with that. You did get the quick claim deed in your packet of what was paid for, for that piece of property from the United States Post Office to Mr. Odyssey, so I will let the directive of your commission.
And depending on what further, our future use of this property, if, if it ends up being sold and that new, new owner wishes to purchase that, then I would say they negotiate with Odyssey over that.
Mr. President, just to kind of make that a, a clean transaction the next, next time, do, I mean, i- if, if we don't see it as having much value, my understanding, they purchased that for $1. Why not give them an offer of $1? And then it's a clean transaction if we sell that lot across the street. We can include that parcel in the sale, and then we can hopefully move forward and not have to worry about issues in the future if we sell that lot.
Commissioner Oderman, just to clarify that, the quick claim deed probably references a dollar as nominal consideration. That's standard granting language in a deed. That doesn't mean that was the consideration that was paid. I, I don't know, in talking with the Odyssey representatives, what they paid for this parcel. I do know that they had mentioned that they spent about $40,000 in legal fees to acquire this parcel, so, but don't rely on that, that dollar figure in the, in the deed because that's probably not accurate.
Thank you for the clarification there.
I'm guessing it's going to cost more than $1,000. We can offer, I don't, we can offer them $1,000, I don't care, I don't think they'll take it, but.
I would, I would be fine offering them what it's worth, but no more than that. Just to, to keep it clean, that it be one parcel, but.
So to clarify, you were looking at, if you pass the motion, it'd be the assessed value of it, or just $1,000? So make sure we put that into the motion.
What was it, $1,022.80 or something?
$1,210 is what the assessed value was.
I would be fine with that, $1,210, unless other Commissioners don't wish to do that. I guess the way I'm looking at it is, you could hamstring future development on that lot if that parcel is important to them.
It all depends on what, what happens there, so. Do you need a motion from us to?
Yes, please.
So I'd look for a motion to, to make an offer on this problem.
I'd move to make an offer at the assessed value.
We have a motion to make an offer at the assessed value by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up, we will be moving City Hall into our, our new residence as soon as American Bank Center vacates their insurance portion of their complex. There are some renovations that need to happen, security measures that need to be put in place to ensure the safety of our city staff and anyone visiting. And there will also be a modification to currently, what is the Christian Bookstore? They will be moving down the street, from what I understand, they have a new residence. So that portion of that insurance center will become the new, the new commission chambers. One of the things in that, that we're going to propose to install immediately to, to help with safety features are a permanent metal detection system. Right now, if you notice, when they have court in these chambers, they set up a temporary system. That location will have a permanent, and that will also be used as city court when we're not using it, so. Anything else, Mrs. Carlson?
No, that's the most, most of the construction would be in that area.
That's just basically in the entrance there, so we're looking to hire an architect or put down RFP for an architect, a firm to come in, look at that, and give us some proposals. So any questions on issuing an RFP? There are no questions or, or concerns. I'd look for a motion to approve an RFP and get that, so we can get the work started on that.
Mr. President, I make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the RFP.
Second.
Second. Motion is by Commissioner Frederick, the second is by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And then we also have Item C that was added as an amendment this evening. This is for our, for security issues, IT issues, and a state line that needs to be run. And this will also, I think Mr. Meyer is also asking to run an additional line at the time to secure the library, am I?
Correct. It would, the line would start from the courthouse, the county courthouse, to City Hall, and then from the courthouse to the library for that, and then from the new City Hall to Fire Station One, so that we are all connected. And with that, we pay around $4,620 for both the line we have now for the library and the one we already have for the fire hall. And once we would connect on one line, that would, would save us on a yearly price of those prices. We wouldn't have to pay that anymore as separate lines. We would just constitute one line, which would be a savings on that. So that's what we're asking. This is the proposed amount that we just received. The, what we had looked at was, when we were first looking at this, we figured it would be around $50,000 from the courthouse to City Hall, is what they estimated to be. We didn't even figure the library or the fire hall in there. That was in discussions later. So when we asked for the proposal on paper, the total with all three of them would be $101,000, with all three inducting new fiber lines to all three areas. So we're asking if you would consider doing this improvement of the fiber lines. It will save us money in the long run. We fig, we, Aaron Meyer and myself, we did figure out when we start getting investment on there, and it would be, it's six years, and then we would see a return on our investment for that, for that fiber line. So this is what we're proposing, and upon consideration, IT and myself are asking for approval on all three proposals to go forward.
So it's roughly about $5,000 a year we pay for the separate lines?
Both, $5,000 for one and so $10,000 for both of them. Yeah, in a year.
Any other questions from Mrs. Carlson or staff on this contract with Burger Electric? And I think Mr. Schneider, you've been also working on, have you worked on this also? A little bit? Okay.
Can I say one more thing? One thing I forgot to mention is, the reason this proposal's coming to you now is because this is the working time that they can get it in. If we would wait until the, when the building gets demolished and then we go in, we'd have to wait almost six months before we can even move in, until these lines are actually within the Until these lines are actually within the new City Hall, then we can't get IT in to start up the servers, to get the lines pulled through, and be able to set us up to move in. So if it's done this summer, this fall, then it would be ready for when we're, they can work during the winter time to set up the server, the new server, and get the lines pulled, so that when we do move, we can just move right in. That's why we're asking for it ahead of time.
So since this was not budgeted, where's it coming from?
The actual amounts coming out, we had talked about in the budget process of the impact fees.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on this proposal? Hearing no other questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Commissioners, this is also your time, if there's any comments you wish to make, or, or anything that we didn't cover this evening, this is your time. If there are any public concerns that you're aware of, that you need to bring forward, let the other commissioners know. Hearing nothing from the other commission members, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.